I'd like to call to order the Clarkson Independence District Library Board of Trustees meeting for May 17, 2021 at 6:31. Please call to roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Here.
Dan Green?
Here.
Allison McFadden-Kesling?
Here.
Nancy Moon?
Here.
Merrill Pomeroy?
Here.
Anne Rose Abson.
Chris Shell?
Here.
Julie Mary?
Here.
Excellent. I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
One and two. We got it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yay.
Motion is approved. I've been waiting to do that for you.
And we don't have to say there we are.
And this is time for the call to the public. I don't see any public.
Laura called and said that, or emailed us, that she was unable to come. She's not very well.
Okay. And I think the main item on their agenda is the book sale in the parking lot.
Yes.
On June fif-
On June 5th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m.
So we will-
Share that. They're beginning the word out on social media, I've seen them.
I know, someone was telling me today at Tai Chi that they had tried to sign up and the slots all seemed to be full.
Wow.
Nice move. So that's a good problem to have.
We have our new volunteer coordinator who's been helping them.
Yay.
She's been actively recruiting on their behalf.
Wow.
Excellent.
Yes, it's been great.
Yep, excellent. I'll accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll move it. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any item that anyone wants to consider individually? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Oh, this is so much faster. And let us now have the library directors report.
Okay. So in terms of general update, the full-time community relations volunteer coordinator and the full-time head of Children's and Teen Services joined the CIDL team on Monday, April 19. They worked very quickly to get up to speed through orientations and meetings with various staff members, and I am very impressed with their integration into our team, so we're very excited about that. The week of April 26, we began the formal field work on the library's 2020 audit. The audit is being conducted remotely, so the process does take longer than it usually does when we have the auditors in the building for a few days. The deadline to complete and submit the audit is June 30, 2021. We should be able to complete it well before that deadline, and we'll then set the date for the presentation to the library board. We're thinking probably June or July, but we'll see. After the completion of our annual inspection of the fire suppression system, Arlene and I sat down with Jim D'Angelo from Absolute Fire Protection, who's been helping us address the various issues with our aging system, to review further preventative maintenance that can be done. Over the past few years, we have been reactively dealing with aging pipes and minor leaks. Now we are looking at valves, gauges, and other controls that are critical to keeping the system functional to consider replacement sooner rather than later. He will be providing a quote for the most pressing items, so that we can take care of those first. After each annual inspection, we will now make it standard practice to address a few items in hopes of preventing any critical failures, damage to the building, or unexpected closures for repairs.
Now, does that mean that eventually we're going to have to overhaul the entire system? Or can we just be handled piecemeal?
He basically said that because the system, because it's a big building, we're not going to really be in a position where we would want to replace the whole thing. No businesses, no fire suppression system is going to want to replace ours, because you'd have to take out every ceiling tile, there's pipes everywhere. So it really is kind of a piece-meal fix. And so what we're looking to do with them is, they did those major repairs last year, which took care of quite a bit of the leaking and things like that that were in trouble with pipes. Now what we're doing is going through and using the annual inspection as an opportunity to identify what is most likely to fail next. So essentially what we're doing, same kind of thing as our capital improvement plan. So, you know, we say, well, you know, the roof was done in 2013, and it has 20 years on it, and so we don't need to look at the roof again until blah, blah, blah. So he's doing the same thing with the fire suppression system. He's saying, okay, well, these are the valves that are controls, these are the gauges that need to tell us the pressures. He just got the compressor replaced, so that's in good shape. Now he's saying, the last time we had an issue and I had to turn off the system, I did not have enough hand strength to turn the valve. And he said, that's an indication that the valve needs to be replaced. So let's replace the valves before we have another issue, so that anybody in the building could turn it off if needed. So then, after we do those critical plates, then next year, when he comes in, they'll say, okay, now let's look at these other things that were not as important as what we did last year, but are more important than the things we'll do next year. And so he's kind of helping us go year by year.
We like professional advice.
Yes. We actually gave him the, a copy of the floor plan of the building that includes the fire suppression system. And he's looking very carefully at all of those things. He may actually make a suggestion to potentially switch part of the system away from being a dry system to being a wet system. He said the problem with the dry system, the reasons, he thinks that the reason that it is dry system is because of the size of the building. I said, it's probably because it's a library and we don't like water hanging over the books. But, he said, the problem with the dry system is that it's condensation in it, and the pipes begin to corrode. And so then you get these leaks, and then there are air leaks, and the system can arm. And he said, it's actually better if the system has water in it. Well, from his perspective, if it has water in it, because the leaks tend to be smaller and you find them sooner. We went kind of round and round about that, and then he said, well, maybe what we ought to do, because he saw, he said, there's actually a very obvious place where we could make part of it a wet system and part of it a dry system. He said, if there's a section, if we made it a wet system, you could probably stop worrying about that section. And if we kept the section dry and it's over the books, then you'd only be focusing on keeping this condensation issue controlled in a smaller area. So, we're not sure if we're going to, he's going to look at it. I have a feeling it's going to be pretty costly to do some of that, but he did, he seemed to think maybe not.
Okay, we definitely do not want wet materials in the library. I want to ask some other libraries if any of them have a wet system in all or parts of their building.
Yeah, I could do that. I, most of the libraries I've worked at have been a dry system, but he says that has more to do with the system and the way it's installed than it does to the, what's in the building. I don't know, that's-
No, I'm going to get your point, because water and books don't mix.
I told him my standard line, which is librarians are like cats, we don't like water, so. And you laugh like you shouldn't have.
Then on we went.
Then on we went, exactly. So, but anyway, what we're doing at this point is we're looking at prevention. And we, it's really interesting. Arlene said, it's the first time we've ever had an annual inspection where afterwards they wanted to go over it with us. Usually they just check all the boxes and hand it to you. And you file it, you tell the fire inspector you did it, but he called and he said, now I want to sit down with you and talk with you about this, because there are things on here that I think need to be fixed. Well, this is the first company that's ever said, wow, maybe we should fix some of the things that we think are questionable during inspection.
And we should talk to you about their-
And we should tell you what they are. Basically what the previous companies were doing were just kind of, and it's really all that was required, was just checking it off and saying, yes, indeed, we checked this. But we're really sitting down and saying, let's fix it. And so I really liked his take on this, that we're going to sit down every year and have a conversation about, about what has happened.
So we can plan for the budget.
So we can plan for the budget, and I have a feeling what'll happen is there will be sort of an annual maintenance, because we've not really done it before, maintenance on the fire suppression system. Every year, and every year we'll tackle a little bit more of it, and hopefully we'll get into it. Because it's never going to be fully replaced, I don't think, unless we do one pipe at a time, which, yeah, we've already been trying to do for the last few years, but we'll see. Anyway. In terms of collaborations, Kaya's Pinwheel for Prevention event that places gardens of blue pinwheels around town to raise awareness about the importance of the well-being of our youth during the month of April was a huge success. There were over 50 gardens and included more than 1,500 pinwheels around town. The library partners on this project with Kaya. This year, we actually provided the curbside pickup of the pinwheel gardens so that people could safely order their gardens online. And because we already had curbside in place, it was really easy for them to just say, this is the order. They would drop it in our lobby, and people could either curbside or pick up in the lobby, depending on what they were comfortable doing, so.
And this year, there's been a huge emphasis on the difficulties that all young people trying to navigate, not only are their parents stressed, but they're also stressed trying to navigate all this online and piecemeal, just like their teachers also, everyone was stressed. Trying to accommodate and acclimate to this various system. So I think this was a particularly important year for that.
It was, and it really drew the program, and I think people realize the importance of it, and I think it will continue to be grown going forward. I don't think this is just sort of a flash in the pan, where we're going to get a lot of support this year, and then next year will be less. I think it really is going to be a good place in terms of growth, so. Joan Harbaugh of the Clarkson Farming Garden Club has been the coordinator of the library's gardens for the past few years. She is formally stepping away from that role, and we want to thank her for her dedication and hard work. She's been a joy to work with. The garden club has decided to use a small team to take on the maintenance of the library's gardens moving forward. We look forward to working with them as well, and are already making plans for tidying the gardens and spreading the mulch this spring, so. We have a plan for that. And last, but definitely not least, just a reminder that friends in the library are planning an outdoor book sale on Saturday, June 5, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., and the rain date will be Saturday, June 12. But we're hoping it's not going to rain.
Are they having tents, or?
They're doing open air. We did that with a sale that we did back in September.
Yeah.
And that worked really, really well. They will have a tent to put over the cashier's table.
Oh, okay.
But they've decided that the evening thing to do-
Yeah.
There would have been a lot of pets.
Well, that's what I wondered, yeah, okay, good.
So they're, they're going to kind of spread it out on tables around, and it will be in the driveway that goes to the back of the building, so that it will be nice to not have to take them very far.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's the other thing.
Yeah.
And items will remain in boxes. Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
So no arrangement. Although the boxes generally are pretty much separated by genre, anyway.
And I think it's going to be sort of table by table, like all the mysteries will be on a table here, but they'll be in boxes. You'll have to do a bit of digging.
Okay.
Well, I think that that's always been one of the biggest things, is once you start setting up and then, you know, and I typically volunteered like later in the afternoon, and I'll see books going, that's not a mystery, and I'll move it, and then I get all that, and.
I think it's great.
This time we'll encourage them to browse further. Very good. Any comments or questions for Julie?
Okay.
All right, let's move to regular business in our monthly COVID update.
Okay, so this month for the COVID update, what I really wanted to do is kind of give you some information that we've been using to make decisions going forward. So the first thing that I gave you is an excerpt from the CDC about, from their scientific brief about the transmission of COVID. And this is specifically about the fomite transmission, which means surface transmission. So you'll remember, we had a conversation about the Realm Project, which was the one in which they were taking COVID and putting it on various types of library materials, and they were tracking its traceability, so how long COVID could be traced on these items. What that was not testing was the transmissibility of COVID. Okay. So that's how we got our quarantining of five days. We have since backed it down to four days. What we're seeing now from this research, and now that we know more, is that fomite transmission is extremely low. And I've given you this article, and then another one that was actually in Lancet, that fomite transmission is actually pretty low even in hospital settings. And so we are feeling like we're getting to a point where we can back off on this quarantining process. However, it does help people feel safer. So we're leaving it in place for a little bit longer, but we're going to start to back off, because what I'm, what we're really concerned is going to happen is that this long quarantining period is going to really slow down the circulation of materials in the summer, because June to around August, COVID or not, are going to be our three busiest months of the year, I'm anticipating. And so we, we need to not have our stuff backing off in the background. So, one of the things that had come out about COVID quarantining was that, well, maybe we could tie the rolling back of the quarantining onto the governor's plan for as people get more vaccinated. And I don't really like doing that, because it's not the vaccinations that are the reason that we're eliminating the quarantining. We're eliminating the quarantining because we are now seeing that while COVID may be traceable in these places, it's not transmissible. And so we should be honest with people and say, we now see the transmissibility on surface is not the problem. Let's stop focusing our efforts on transmissible via surface and refocus all of our efforts on transmissibility in the air. So we're not quite ready to give up our masks necessarily yet. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but, but that we can start to back this off. And so I wanted to make this very clear to the board and to the public, that this is where we are scientifically. And so when we start to roll back these quarantining times, we won't do it all of a sudden. We don't want to freak people out, we want to give people the chance to kind of get used to that idea. But we also have people who are seeing this data, and they're saying, why are you still quarantining stuff? You know, I'm waiting for this book. So, we're trying to kind of balance those two things.
Okay.
So then the next thing that I have in your packet is the Michigan VAC via Invicta ACC to Normal Challenge. This is something that the governor rolled out back at the end of April. It really was about the percentage of fully vaccinated people and kind of where Michigan was going to be going rolling things back. So, this one is a screen capture of the April 29 numbers. We've already started talking about this, step one, which is the 55% plus 14 days, and lifting the state's requirements for employers to require remote work when feasible and those kinds of things. So I just wanted to kind of put this out there, this is still out there. The announcement that was made on Friday regarding unvaccinated people, or vaccinated people being able to shed their masks in a variety of settings, kind of puts this a little bit up in the air in terms of, are we following this? Are we not following this? What are we doing here? So, so I'm putting this out there so that you can see it and, and take a look at it. I have a feeling this will still be in play as we start to back off some of these other kinds of restrictions.
Gatherings and that sort of thing.
But I'm not sure. Okay. So the next thing that I have in here, and this is directly in response to the announcement that vaccinated people could shed their masks, and kind of what we decided to do over the weekend, because it was really short notice, it came out on Friday, and was supposed to take effect at 9 a.m. on Saturday, and the staff was immediately saying, what does this mean for us? Fortunately, being a library and having the state library directly helping us with all of this, they contacted MyOSHA, and MyOSHA said, no, 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 you don't change anything till we say you change anything. So, we went with that tech. But, it is also relatively common knowledge that on a beautiful Friday, it's not uncommon for state employees to take the day off, and so many people who needed to get ahold of MyOSHA and say, what are we supposed to be doing with this, may not have been able to get that question answered. So there was a lot of confusion over the weekend. Mask, don't mask, do you need to require, do you not need to require, blah, blah, blah. So our take, and the message that I sent to the staff, was we appreciate that unmasking is very exciting, but we feel like we have this rule in place that is MyOSHA, that is workplace safety, which says specifically vaccinated or unvaccinated, we should be telling people to wear masks. Now, MyOSHA is saying that they will probably have new rules, potentially Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. I, we don't know what those rules will say, so we're a little bit up in the air. But for the time being, I said to the staff, unmasking is not an emergency. Getting people to mask when COVID was running, remember that was an emergency. This is not an emergency. Our patrons have been really good, we have just been using that. You know, thank you so much for sticking with us a little bit longer. We just need to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and that we're not violating anything that health codes are saying that we should be doing, just because we're getting ahead of the releasing of the actual rules.
So if I do, we'll see what happens. We might see all of you.
Maybe.
About four of you.
Okay. So then, the last thing I put in here was the, was a little announcement that was put out by the Detroit Regional Chamber of Commerce, which they sent out a nice, I thought, a very nice, clear message to businesses saying, stick with what you're doing. So these are the two pieces of evidence that we used in order to make our decision to get us through the weekend. The feedback I got from the staff that worked over the weekend said that the patrons were great and very understanding. It was helpful that some big corporations that are not just in Michigan came forward and said, no, no, let's just stick with what we're doing. So it helped that Kroger, Meyer, some of those bigger parks stepped in and said, nope, we're going to stick with it, and it made it obvious to them that it was okay for us to do the same. Although, to be perfectly honest, our community has been incredibly supportive. And we haven't had very, very few conversations about whether or not people should wear masks. I told the story more than once, on the very, very first day that we reopened to the public, we had our little greeter station, the very first patron walked in and said to me, what do I need to do so that you can be open? And I said, I need you to wear a mask. And she said, duh. And she walked into the building. And generally speaking, that has been the attitude of all of our patrons, that they're just willing to do what we need them to do in order for us to be open. So, they've been super understanding, and I'm grateful for that, because this is, it's a hard job to tell people, you know, to do something that maybe they don't want to do, so. Okay, any questions about any of that?
Nope, nice to highlight everything, thank you.
So I think what you'll probably be seeing in the next couple of days is emails from me kind of updating you on what's coming next. But they said we're a little bit up in the air, and I have a feeling by the end of the week, things will be changing yet again. I don't know that there's really any decisions to be made unless, unless any of you have feedback on what you would like to see happen. I don't know.
You're doing great, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I think that it would be nice to still encourage to mask wearing, but if it, you know, if it can't be a requirement, it can't be a requirement, but, you know, it's just the way it is.
Well, I have to take into consideration sort of the number of employees and staff that are being decked. That's another thing that I kind of wanted to let people know. We are, we are able to ask our employees if they are vaccinated. That information would then be considered HIPAA. It would need to be appropriately protected, so we wouldn't be sharing it with others on staff. My, my point, my, I take on it at this point is that people's medical choices are their medical choices, and I've been leading into them. We've been encouraging people to get vaccinated, but, you know, it's not my place to tell them on either. At this point, when we did our, we did an anonymous survey back in January, asking people, and that was when we had gone back to curbside and had not yet reopened to the public, and I asked them if they wanted, this was when vaccinations were still sort of, you know, do you want to be vaccinated? Will you feel safer to reopen if you're vaccinated? And 80% of the people who responded, which wasn't, was a little more than half the staff, 80% of them wanted to be vaccinated. Now, all of that, I had several people who approached me and wanted to talk about it privately. People who did not want to be vaccinated wanted to let me know why, whatever, and that was perfectly fine. Some of those people who said they did not want to be vaccinated at that time have since gotten vaccinated. So, if some people just needed a little more-
They needed more information.
You're right.
Yeah.
So, we seem to have a high interest amongst our staff about wanting to be vaccinated. And, and people have been kind of, you know, everybody got their little war story about going to get vaccinated. It went really well or it went really poorly, that's just kind of the way it is, but, but I think that's been really reassuring for a number of people as well, so.
And everyone's had different reactions, so sharing has been beneficial to see that everybody's reacting a little differently.
Yeah. But at this point, it would not be, it would not be my plan to require that, for people to get vaccinated. There, legally, there are ways to do that, I'm not a fan of that, but we were definitely discouraged by the attorney you'll hear, some places are sort of rewarding people for getting vaccinated. Our attorney said, no, 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 that's a big, that's a big, don't do that. So, so we've just, as I said, been very positive and upbeat in encouraging people to do so.
Yes, you feel bad if you live in Ohio, if you already got vaccinated, and now they're going to give a million dollars if you get vaccinated. Okay.
Okay.
So, is the general feeling, we just let the information keep rolling in, and Julie will keep parsing it out? Okay.
All right. Just keep rolling along with that.
All right. Number two, the review of the first quarter financial report.
Okay, so, you'll, this is the spreadsheet that you have in your packet. This one I did not highlight for you. I highlighted mine, but I'll go over it with you. So, there are two pages. The first page you want to look at is the one that will include property taxes at the top.
Yep.
Okay. So, first thing that we want to do, column A, just as a reminder, is the 2021 budget as you approved it. Column B is the three-month mark, so sort of what we should have spent if we were spending our money evenly, month by month, at the three mark, three-month mark, this is the amount we should have spent if we were spending it evenly. Column C is what we have actually spent at that three-month mark. And the column, the very last column, that column is C minus A is the amount remaining. Okay. So the first thing that I'm going to call your attention to are those little brackets that indicate a deficit. So property taxes, there's 623,000 there, and property taxes have not yet been collected. Remember, this is January, February, and March. So it's still kind of early. That's a pretty big number, but I also know that we've gotten some pretty big checks that would not have shown up on this. So, I'm not super worried about that yet. But it is something to be aware of. Okay, the next one that's got a deficit number in it is that state grants. That is our state aid money. That doesn't come until the middle of summer and then again in September. So that's going to be a deficit going forward. Usually the first check comes around June or July, and the second check usually comes in August or September, so. So that one, not a worry at all. Interest income. This one, I think, I didn't actually talk to the accountant about this one, but that particular number we're going to want to keep an eye on in terms of how much we're taking in in interest. But at this point, I'm not, I'm not real worried about it. Book finds, we actually lowered that number in terms of how much we anticipated taking in, because you've been waiving late fees. Okay. So, at this point, based on normal late, normal three-month point, we should be at 1,250, and we're at 1,009. But we're getting a lot more usage. We were a little bit slow at the beginning of the year, we picked up in February, we were closed to the public January, and then into February a little bit, and we reopened. So we're getting more traffic, we're getting more checkouts and whatever, but remember, this is the money just for lost items. So we don't really want this number to go up necessarily. What we really want is people to think they're stuff mad and have a stain in the collection. So, the point at which we discuss reinstating late fees, or whether or not we're going to reinstate late fees, how are we deciding to do that? This number will change significantly potentially. Penal fines. Penal fines is another one that comes later in the year, so we're not worried about that. E-rate also comes way at the end of the year, usually November, December, so we're not worried about that.
So it's just not relevant in the beginning of the year?
Nope, no, that money wouldn't be here, we're not going to see it until later anyway. We budget, because it will be coming eventually, but it's not, this is just too early for it. But I want to kind of go over, make sure everybody kind of remembered where we were with those various numbers. Duplicating and photocopying that particular number. Duplicating and photocopying that particular number, given the three-month mark is actually up significantly. We've been doing lots and lots of copying for people and printing for people, so that's been good. Part of that has to do with the fact that we let it in the building. Given to you the front of the matrix. Okay, so I'm going to hop down quite a bit, because everything else, the wages and everything, are, we're below budget on the three-month mark. There is one that is workers' compensation, which is 721. That number, at the three-month mark, we are at 13, we should be at 1325, and we're at 2164. That's because workers' comp is not an even payment. That is four installment payments that have to be done before the middle of the year. So that one is a payout that we will total the entire budget well before the end of the year, but it won't go over budget. Just so that you're aware of that one. Okay, next page. Eight-one-eight professional and contract services, that particular one, the three-month mark would be sixteen, eight-seventy-five, and we're at twenty-three-forty. That's another one of those ones that we just don't spend evenly because it's on an as-needed basis. There are a number of services that are in there that we pay at the beginning of the year for a year worth of service. So I'm not concerned about that one. Telephone bill, the telephone bill, I think, is like this because, and I, I pulled it with the accountant, and I haven't gone back and fixed it yet. We think that there are some things that should have been in nine-three-three that got stuck in the telephone bill. So that is not something that's over budget. I think that a few of our, um, our bills for our Wi-Fi hotspot, because they're phone bills, because it's a phone company, I think they accidentally got put in that one. So we're going to, we're going to, you'll see that thing dump next quarter, but we think that's what that is. The building and grounds maintenance, we should be at twenty-five-two-fifty, and we're at twenty-six-two-thirty-one.
That's spot on.
That's, well, and to be honest, that's another one that doesn't really get spent evenly because it has to do with snow plowing and laundry and virus suppression systems and all those crazy things. That's, that's not a, you know, yeah, that's not a month-by-month bill. But the fact that we're pretty spot on in terms of our, you know, the pacing of it is helpful. And that's Arlene's line, I know. And she, she controls that with an iron fist, so we're really, I'm not worried about that one. She will let us know long in advance that there's some, something unexpected that we need to cover, so. And those are the only ones that, that gave me any pause. Does anybody have any questions or anything that they noticed in there? I'd like to hope we make it to the first quarter, through the first quarter of the year without too much drama in the budget.
We had enough drama elsewhere.
Yep, yep, I think the budget is looking pretty good, though. You will notice that we are, that the staffing numbers seem really below budget. Remember, we had two full-time employees whose positions were vacant, so obviously
In the first quarter.
Yep, in the first quarter. So we have taken care of that.
So any questions, comments? Thank you. Looking
Very good.
Looking good. All right, let's move to number three, discussion regarding waiving of fines through June thirtieth.
Okay, so, um, due to the pandemic, the library board voted to waive library fines for overdue materials through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, to address the issue of the significant delay of checking materials due to the COVID quarantine process. As a clarification, this waiver only includes fines for materials that have been returned past their due date. Fees incurred for lost or damaged items are still in effect. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, the length of this quarantine process was based on the RAME study, which was conducted by OCLC and supported by the VITALA Labs to produce science-based information about how to handle materials in order to mitigate COVID exposure to staff and visitors. The RAME study measured the length of the time the virus can be detected on materials, but did not provide information about how long the virus might be transmissible. More recent data shared in scientific journals such as The Lancet and posted by the CDC indicates that the likelihood of fomite surface transmission, even in hospital settings, is very low, and that we should focus our COVID mitigation efforts on airborne transmission. While cleaning and quarantine protocols may not necessarily reduce the transmission of COVID, they do help people to feel safer. We are now in the process of educating the staff and patrons about these more recent findings, so everyone understands why something that was deemed necessary before will no longer be needed. In the coming weeks, we will be reducing and eliminating the quarantine practices.
I think also, remember when we had to spray every curtain that came to the house with Lysol? So over time, the public is becoming, as more studies are done, that it would be safe and sorry.
Indeed, absolutely.
Now we don't have to store the groceries in the garage and so forth.
Yeah, and wipe each and every item off before you bring it in the
Right.
Which we were doing at our house until very recently, like last week.
So I think we are, we're, the public is ready to, as more data comes out, to move to opening.
And so we really want to start to get that, that data out there so that people understand that something that we deemed very important on the front end does not necessarily need to come to that end, so that we're, we're making those changes. Having said all that, there are a number of libraries prior to the pandemic that have been eliminating late fees as standard policy, as there is data indicating that their intended purpose, getting patrons to return materials in timely fashion, may not actually assist with that. Our board had a brief conversation about this at the time. It is proposed to provide a presentation to the board at the June meeting regarding the reasoning these libraries are using to make this decision, to allow this concept to be revisited and fully discussed. This preliminary discussion is an opportunity for the board to bring up any specific questions they want to assure or address in the presentation next month. So the bottom line is that, um, this was, this was really a conversation that started in twenty nineteen, where libraries were starting to eliminate late fees as a means of preventing access to people who may not be able to afford those late fees. So for example, they weren't using the library because they couldn't afford the late fees, and they were more worried about, about racking up a bunch of debts that they couldn't afford, that sort of thing. There had been some research showing that, that essentially, late fees don't always have their intended purpose, which is getting people to bring their materials back. And there was a really nice webinar about this. And Matt and I both watched it, and we had both been looking at this and saying, we were very skeptical of holding up this webinar. We thought, well, okay, they've made some good points. And then COVID happened, and so we decided that perhaps we could set that aside, or perhaps we had to set that aside. And we ended up waiving late fees because of this quarantine process. So to me, it seems like this is an ideal time to have a real conversation about this. Do we put the fines back in place, late fees back in place? Do we not put the late fees back in place? This is the perfect time to do that. If we're going to waive them, let's not put them back in place and then take them back out. If we read through all of this data and go through all those restrictions, decide that late fees are an appropriate thing for us to be doing, then let's just put it back in place and be done with it that way. So Chris and I had a conversation about doing a presentation next month at the board meeting so that you can see the data that we have seen, and we can have more of a conversation. Before we do that, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we were planning on having this conversation. And give you an opportunity to say, hey, if you're going to do this presentation, I really want to know X and Y and Z, and we will make sure that it's in there so that we are not presenting it in June. And then having you say, because of course this expires June thirtieth, having you say, have anything else to say to you? Well, we, we didn't think about that, we need to go back and find that information for you, and then come back, and then we're having this long-delayed conversation about it, so.
The one item that I want to address is, we have put in place a policy of automatic renewals, which I love. So I, I think that that has helped, is that we have items that can be automatically renewed, was it twice? And so during COVID, that certainly has been helpful. So we know that if we turn our books or items in, and they're going to be in quarantine, it's really not going to be an issue. But I do want to see some data on, if you take off everything that says, please bring your materials back, then are we a library? If people are going to take out the materials and not return them, then part of the function of the library is that we've, we've amassed all these materials with taxpayer money so that they're available for all of the people in our district or who work here to be able to access them.
So what you're saying is you want to make sure, you want us to bring back any data about how these libraries that are, that are no longer using late fees, how are they getting their stuff back?
Yes, are they getting their stuff back?
Yeah, they're getting their stuff back.
Is there a problem with some that say, oh, okay, I'll just throw it on the shelf, and I don't really need to worry about it because there's no penalty if I don't return it?
Right.
That's, that's, I do like
Well, naturally, there would be a penalty, but
I think, I think that's the key, but eventually there is. I think that what it is, is we're saying, if we said no fines, which I'm personally a favor of, if we said no fines, eventually it becomes a lost item, because
But when?
Well, that would, that would be
That would be hard to determine.
But it would still be like, no fines, but then at some point, it's a social contract. So you borrowed this, you need to return it at some point, and yes, there's no fine, you can, you're a very slow reader, and it's fine. You might have it for X amount of months, but at the end of that, you must bring it back, otherwise, I'm suspecting, it would then go into a lost item status, and then you owe the purchase of the, the cost of the book, or the item, whatever it is.
And one of the areas that I'm concerned about is the new books. Ah, the bestseller has just come out, and George has taken it home, and we don't see it again for months and months till it's no longer a bestseller. So part of the incentive of sharing the new materials is not, so that, I want some data on
Right, what, what other libraries are experiencing in terms of
Maybe there could be an exception, seriously, maybe there could be an exception for new books. You know, maybe that would be something that would be a different category.
Yeah, you know, so if it's something that's no longer number one, you know, I sometimes find a book, oh, I like it, and now I can read all eighteen books that person wrote because they've all been written. I don't wait for the next new one.
Yeah, but it's not his number five for a very long time, if he was changing as a new book, he's waiting for number five.
You need continuity, you need to finish five before you get to six. So those are the kind of issues I'd like to see what those who have put no fines in place, how are they dealing with some of those issues?
Is it hard to
I'm open to discussion, I just would like to know.
No, well, I think that that, those are all really good parts because it is those hot items that, that, you, you want to see those come back quickly because you do have people waiting. I just started, when I, I wanted in a, a Facebook book club, but when I posted that I had started reading it, someone else said, there are thirteen people ahead of me on the waiting list at my library now, yeah. So, you know, you, that, that might be something that you do address separately. Is it hard to keep track of all this? You know, let's say you've got five books that have been out for, you know, six months, and then you take out more, and
It's really
And you still have the list is
We have a, well, it's easy for us to keep track of, we have a, a very robust software that keeps track of that. It's easy for us to run reports and things like that. Now, in terms of the patrons, um, they can log into their account at any time and see the due dates on everything. We do email or text, letting people know if things are renewed, also letting them know if it's auto-renewed. When it's due back, because there's a hold on it, it'll say. The second did not renew because
And that's, that's very helpful.
Yes, I agree, definitely.
And, and to, to be proactive, when they, when the conversations started happening about the possibility, you know, different libraries are starting to waive late fees, our response was to look at auto-renew, knowing that the thing that was probably most annoying to people was that fifteen cent fine because it was due yesterday. So auto-renew has eliminated that
Right.
For most people, I mean, obviously, there's a hold on it. Never spend there, it's a penalty, we want it back because somebody's waiting for it. But that really gave people, it was great for people who, you know, throw it in the backseat and get home and realize they forgot to stop at the library, or whatever, you know? Or the kids left it in the backseat, or whatever happens, but that's all the while, though.
Well, and parents are checking out, they might be checking out forty books. And they're trying, you know, so trying to round those.
Yeah, but again, then is there a limit at which point, if you've, uh, ten items that you've taken out at various points in time and never returned, do we say at some point, you've really kind of got to bring those back before you can have any more?
Right. And our system is, our software is robust enough to allow us to do those kinds of things. And it is currently set up to do those kinds of things now. But if you have long overdue items, they put a stop and says, no, no, you can't have anything else until you bring back the stuff you got.
Okay, now see, enough, so Those kinds of things, and this gives the public, if they're watching tonight, this gives them a chance to let the library know how they feel about this, or their problems they're running into that we're not aware of.
Right, because the point is not to be punitive, that, that was never really the point. Any of the fines is to get the stuff back so that the next people can use it.
Right.
And it's hardly a big-ticket budget item.
No, but it's not.
It's circulation that we're, we want them to circulate, not stay there.
How much money do you make on fines there? It isn't much, is it?
Normally, in a, in a normal year, it would be about eighteen thousand dollars, but that includes lost items as well. So if, I, I should be able to run reports to tease out what would be for a late fee and what would be for a lost item, so that we can kind of get a feel for that. But that is less than one percent of our budget. So this is not, we're not using this as a revenue stream. It really is intended to, I mean, obviously, we are very grateful for every penny that comes in, but we are not using this to add the library's budget, so.
Just hoping, wanting to keep things circulating.
We did have an interesting situation several years ago when I first became director, where I had somebody who wrote a letter to the editor in the newspaper stating that our DVD fine was excessive. It was a dollar per day for a late DVD, and she was very, she very much thought that that put us in the same category as a commercial operation like Blockbuster, that tells you how long ago this was, that we'd be compared to Blockbuster, and there aren't really any Blockbusters anymore. But, um, so I read the letter, and I was thinking through it, and I was trying to craft a good response. In the meantime, two other residents who were patrons wrote letters to the editors stating, you need to bring your stuff back, because I followed away from that DVD, and I thought, well, that's interesting. I didn't bother to respond at that point because I needed to do it, and they didn't really need to. So it, it did, there, I think that this is a, it can, this can be a polarizing topic. But I wanted to be able to sort of start that conversation, and, you know, like I said, that there are a number of libraries doing it. I don't want to reinstate the fines, and then have us six months from now decide that we really like this idea and we'll kick it away again. That, that seems silly, so if we're going to do this, let's talk about it now.
So that we can make a decision this year.
So that we can make it, yeah, yeah.
As things begin to get back to normal.
And, and I've talked to some library directors who put it in place, thinking that people are going to love it, and they did get some pushback from the community, saying, no, no, I want something in place to get people to return the materials that I'm waiting for. So it does kind of go both ways. So, um, if we may need some feedback from the community about how they would feel about it. Right now, they're very glad now they have fines because of the quarantine and everything else. Late fees would just be ridiculously difficult to manage and do it fairly. Yeah. But if we're getting rid of the quarantine process and things are flowing like they should be again, I want to make sure people, the materials are getting into their hands of the people that need them in a timely fashion as well, so.
So we want to review this policy.
Yep.
And so who, that'll put Chris to work, everybody to work giving us data for, for June.
Oh, there's any specific data that you're looking for? I did make some notes, um, you know, the libraries that are, that are doing this, how do they get their materials back? What is the, is that the great bend for materials? That we have some concern about the new materials, and is that something that we maybe do just buy new materials and talk to the other library about some of that? And as I said, there was a whole presentation about it, and Chris will be taking from, from that as well. And that, that particular webinar had a lot of the pros. We've also talked to some libraries that feel the opposite way, so we've done comments as well. So we'll try to bring kind of an objective to these points and then let you know what our recommendation is. Right now, I think he and I are a little bit on the fence about this whole thing. Give these people a sign.
How's our community been so far? Because we don't have plans right now, it hasn't been with returning material in China.
It's really, really hard to measure because of the quarantine. It really is.
Right, because I quite often will get an email two days after I've no longer returned books, going, these books are due.
And we know that they're in the
And they're going to show us as they came down late.
Well, and one of the problems that we have, the one thing that the software can't do, because it didn't, it didn't anticipate COVID any more than the rest of us did, is we can't turn off those things saying that your items are late. Or it turns off all of the notifications, which means that then you no longer get the notification about the book you have at home.
No, I, I mean, it's fine, because I always know, oh, yeah, you returned this already. But, but if you're keeping data, then it's going to show on your data that I returned those books late, when in fact I may not have.
Or it's on quarantine, and they can't return them at all, maybe they're really late, but normally, they would have referred them at the time.
Right.
And I think that whatever we decide is not going to go into place until these restrictions are lifted anyway.
Right.
But it's good to be
It's a time to, to consider, to make a good decision, and one that we can all live with.
We collect data.
That's what we do.
That's what we do. Did I, did I use the details that you, like, there, obviously, we're going to have lots of things to talk about in this particular situation, but is there anything that, that we talked about today I missed in my notes?
No, I think in the notes, the idea of if you have someone who's chronically, who does this all the time, what are the safeguards?
Right, I mean, because now if I do, you know, one book this month and then two books next month, and then in six months, I've got ten books out. Other which are, you know, should be current.
Because apparently we can. So in other words, if there is someone who has a real problem with this, they can be dealt with individually without.
Exactly.
All the other papers.
You may never get those books back, but you're not going to keep sending those people home with more books.
Yeah. And that's always been something that libraries have to deal with. And, and the software is set up to do some of that. You can put some things in place that if there is a, what we call a long overdue item, that will block the accounts. So until you bring your long overdue item, you can't check out anything else.
Or deal with the long overdue.
Whatever, however you deal with it, whether you, we just wanted that.
Or we'd like to replace it, or.
Right, or had a technical services, prefers it when you bring stuff back. He doesn't really want to have to re-buy it and re-process it and re-run it or anything like that, so. It is, he would rather be processing new material to get you new stuff on the shelf than, than redoing old stuff that.
Right, that's number one.
People that wanted to read have already read it.
Yeah, we still have to replace it.
Because we're still moving it.
Yeah, you know. Indeed. Now see how spirited this was and it's only May.
We're all so excited to be back in the room together.
Oh, yeah. So tell Chris, we're really looking forward to it. And if we have no other items, Dan, I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed nay. Ah, the meeting is adjourned at seven-twenty-four.